Go ahead and call, is that echoing?
Yeah, I got a mute in my ear.
Okay, there we go. Let's call to order the August 19th meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Ayana, would you please call the role?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Commissioner Rutledge.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehob people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society. Regarding the agenda, do I hear a motion on that?
Yes, Chair, can I move new business items A and B and just flip them so that we do our housekeeping first? And then we have our probably lengthy discussion second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's ask for any opposed. Okay, seeing none, we will adjust the agenda accordingly. Regarding meeting minutes, you've all had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from May 6th, May 20th, and June, what was that final date that we reviewed? June 3rd, was it? Yes. Any corrections identified, Commissioners? There, on the meeting minutes for June 3rd, there were a couple of, looks like just scribblers errors. Ayana, the paragraph reads McKenzie Smith. I believe we're talking about McKenzie Sullivan. Hmm, someone knows you. And then there was a typo, Ariel to area, and I'll just hand you my copy, if that's okay. So Commissioners, any objection to the meeting minutes with those corrections? Okay, seeing none, the meeting minutes from May 6th, May 20th, and June 3rd are approved. On to reports. Commissioners, any reports this evening? Okay, I missed you guys. That's my report, and turning it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair Chatters. Good evening, Planning Commission. York Stevens, Watched, Planning Director. With me this evening is Frank Hong, Special Projects Manager for Housing, and Allison Wetzel, Long Range Planning Manager. Welcome back. We hope you're having a wonderful summer. You probably heard, but just in case, Everett 2044 passed. We left you on early June, I think, with your final recommendation. The ordinances passed the council unanimously on June 18th, and the ordinances became effective on July 8th. We're starting to answer questions. We're past starting to, but there haven't been a ton of applications and questions. So we continue to develop materials to support applicants and members of the public in understanding the new rules, FAQs, webpages, guidance documents, and that sort of thing. We're starting to see some of the first applications under the new regulations. I don't think we've had many that were received, but there are inquiries, pre-applications, and other discussions with projects that are on their way to application. So we'll try to report back on the status of that as frequently as we can. Of course, we have a housekeeping amendments on the agenda tonight. That's some of the items that we hear about, and staff have just noticed in their reviews, and we're hoping to fix as many of those as we can. We'll probably have a couple of those as the year goes by. This was a massive amendment, and there was bound to be some errors in it. Council, staff, we all thank you again for your hard work with Everett 2044. That was three years. That was a lot of meetings. That was a lot of weekends reading packets, and that was a lot of tough decisions for you to make. We benefited greatly from your involvement in the project and those questions and the recommendation. I'll touch on the mention that the council did not, there was, at your last meeting, we had some discussion about inclusionary zoning, and I know that was one that we all struggled with throughout, at least the second half of the process. The council did not wind up taking the recommendation to eliminate inclusionary zoning, but they did talk about it quite a bit in that last meeting. If you didn't have a chance to watch, you can do so and see some of the comments that were there. I know that was one of the more challenging topics in that update, and that says a lot because there was a lot of challenges in that update. Some of the statements were, you know, "Let's do it to start." I think it was always going to be something that we're going to monitor closely, and we're going to continue to look at, and we're going to see how development responds. We are planning to work on a Casino Road Neighborhood Plan, which addresses similar geography, and that'll be another opportunity for us to look at the financial landscape around housing and see what tools we have available, and if there are any adjustments that need to be made. I guess I'll look forward. We have a meeting, next scheduled meeting is September 16th. We're not going to meet on September 2nd. That's right next to Labor Day weekend. And we normally, we're going to try to revert back to the normal schedule of the 3rd Tuesdays and not both the 1st and the 3rd Tuesdays. So I see for the rest of the year, that would mean October 21st, November 18th, and December 16th for our last three meetings after the September 1. If we need, we can also activate one of those first Tuesdays. I don't see any of those really being impacted by holidays too much. That's it for staff comments, unless there's anything to my right. That's it.
Thank you. We now have an opportunity for public comments. Ayana, do we have anyone online who wishes to comment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. And we have no one here in the gallery. Our next agenda item is to elect our vice chair with the departure of Commissioner Atkins, who we are really grateful for his years and years of service to this community on this commission, as well as the Rethink Housing project that preceded the comp plan update. We just remain grateful to him for his service, but that gives us an opportunity to bring on a new vice chair. So with that, I'll ask for nominations. And if no one has a nomination, I have a nomination in mind, so I'll exercise my privilege as chair to nominate Commissioner Shelby, if he would be so kind as to accept.
I'll second the nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Okay, with that, if we could have a vote, Ayana?
Chair Chatters.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby.
Epstein.
Commissioner Rutledge.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Congratulations, Commissioner Shelby.
Congratulations, Commissioner Shelby. I look forward to moving you to this chair.
Alrighty.
All right. Next on our agenda item, we're going to address the housekeeping amendments. Hopefully resolve those first before we move on to the new business of manufactured home, community zoning. So we'll turn that over to you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Like I said, this is a first early batch of housekeeping amendments that we noticed in the final days of the update, and thereafter, we've got, I don't know, about 15 or 20 or so that staff have been keeping a note of. I will touch on a couple of the ones that are, let's see, our standard for this is that they should not be a policy change. They should be consistent with what we understand the intent to be, or they should make no difference, correcting lettering or numbering or something like that. The code reviser is still working, I guess the code reviser and the consultant general code who maintains our online codified Title 19 are still working to apply all of the changes to all of the sections in there. So when you go to look at our online code, it's still the old Title 19, but with flags alerting people that there has been an ordinance to change it. You can also go to the Planning Department webpage and everettwad.gov/2044. I have that so memorized that it's starting to fade already. That website remains active and has copies of the ordinance, as well as clean copies of all of the chapters of the development regulations. So if you're looking for 1908 as it stands now after the ordinance, go to the Planning Department webpage for the best and easiest to access part of that. I anticipate we may find some more things from the code reviser's office as that process continues. We'll also keep noting technical corrections. There will be some policy type things that we'll initiate code amendments on over the next couple of years, but I think we'll have 1, 2, 3 housekeeping ordinances just to clean up these sort of clarifications and corrections. So Exhibit A to your memo is a list of all of the sections, the edit, and then some comments about why the edit. I will touch on a little bit less than half of those that are approaching something that needed some interpretation, and I'll just jump right into it. So the second row, 1904030, would be deleting, and these are just in order by section of code, numerically. So in definitions, we would delete the definition for "street-facing dwelling unit facade." This might be one of the more complicated ones, actually, because there is some debate or some room for interpretation on what it does impact, but that term, which was a pre-existing term from old code, means a ground or first floor of a dwelling unit facade facing and within 30 feet of a front or side street lot line on a public street. So there are two aspects of that that could affect a provision in the code that uses that term, and that's the within 30 feet, and that's the ground floor. So in new code on the comments section, you can see where the only two places that the full term is used, and that is new in 1908030, "New dwelling units that include any facade within 30 feet of a public street right-of-way must face the street," which means including "a street-facing dwelling unit facade that includes one of the front porch or entrance types facing the public street for each individual dwelling or shared building entry." So 30 feet of the right-of-way and ground floor, do either of those aspects change how this 1908030 is interpreted? And I would say no. The provision itself has the 30 feet in it, so that's duplicative of the definition, and then an entry just has to be on the ground floor. The second one that uses the exact one is about garage wall facade. Similarly, it uses the 30 feet, and garage wall facades would normally only be on the ground floor. This one has 35 feet in it because the garage is 5 feet stepped back from the 30 feet, which is where the building would be to trigger that requirement. So once again, I don't think, I know this was a topic that we talked about, but at least in terms of that definition, I don't see that that affects this at all. So those are the two places where the exact term is used, and I could safely say that it does not impact either of those, so good to go on deleting it. There's a similar term that's missing, the word dwelling unit, that is "street-facing facade." That gives us a little bit more of a furrowed brow here. The first one, transparency, "At least 15% of the area of each street-facing facade must be windows or main entrance doors." Now, in that case, two questions. Should that only apply within 30 feet of the right-of-way? And does that only count the ground floor? This is a provision that was existing. We did not change it. The land use team and the permitting team have been applying that on the entire buildings, so the whole facade, ground floor, and upper floors, the 15%. I think in general, it's, there are usually more windows the higher up you get on a building. It's the ground floor where there tend to be some blank walls if there's garages involved in it and all of that. Does "street-facing facade" trigger the definition of "street-facing dwelling unit facade"? That's a little bit tough. I don't know. It's in the same vein. You're just missing the words dwelling unit. That would be a little bit of a challenging interpretation. If we were to drop the definition, then I think we would apply this to the whole facade, and we would apply it to all buildings, not just those within 30 feet of the right-of-way. I don't think in this section it is limited to buildings facing the street. We've had a lot of discussion internally about which of these provisions should be applied to dwellings that are interior to the lot, so not on the street-facing side. Does transparency matter if you can't see the street? Does it matter if you have transparency to a driveway, drive aisle, pedestrian path, whatever your yards, that sort of a thing? Definitely more important near the street. Some debate within staff of the level of importance not facing the street. And I would say the next four, which use that same "street-facing facade," are in the same vein. So I would say the effect of deleting this definition of "street-facing dwelling unit facade" would clarify that all of those provisions, for sure, do apply whether or not you're within 30 feet of the right-of-way, and do apply whether or not it's on the ground floor. We could we could argue that it was understood that some of these provisions would not apply outside of 30 feet from the right-of-way. That's a tough exercise. What was in my mind? What was in your minds? What was in the council's minds? What was in the public's minds? I think it's debatable, and some may have read it different ways. I can't remember what our slides said and what we talked about in here. So a little bit of an opportunity that we could interpret that folks thought that that applied near the street and on the ground floor, and then we could add something about 30 feet or ground floor to this second set of terms. So I will stop there. The baseline and easiest thing is to just delete the definition, and then I mentioned what that would leave us with. We could also entertain adding some words on that applicability. So I'll pause there, and don't worry, the rest of these are not that complicated.
So I want to be, hold on. "Street-facing dwelling unit facade" versus "street-facing facade," so we're getting rid of dwelling unit.
We're getting rid of the definition for "street-facing dwelling unit facade." It is a little bit debatable whether, normally, a glossary term, you would look to the exact term, and you wouldn't look to a term that's like it.
Right.
This gets into like intent and everything, that when we do a real legal interpretation, we would try to, but the proposed fix would be to just delete that term from the glossary, which would then revert to what does "street-facing facade" mean? Facade that faces the street.
Okay. I mean, I always think less is more, so I'm definitely favor. I also find it ironic that we spent a lot of time talking about this. There was a lot of debate on if we thought this was important.
Yeah.
And I just noted that it's coming back up so quickly, so maybe we should have spent more time on it.
The interplay of the definition with those provisions always made me a little bit uncomfortable. It was using a definition that we already had, although it used to apply for different reasons. I think it was more used for the big buildings and like your "street-facing dwelling unit facade" must have, I can't remember exactly what it was, but if there's interest, we can do a little bit more research between now and the next meeting over the next month, too.
Well, but not if that makes it more complicated.
Yeah.
Really, like the less is more, I still think we're, we still have a lot of regulations and requirements, so if this is going to streamline or simplify or allow an interpretation to be a little bit more flexible, I think that's what we should do.
Would that include not having it apply to things that are not actually facing the right-of-way? Because I thought that we had talked about that, and we had kind of landed on that, if my memory serves.
I just remember not really caring that much that we had to have a street, that I wanted a "street-facing facade." I remember that not being a very hyperary for me, and being, specifically, we were talking about if you have like an easement or a driveway and your house is faced that, but yet there was a road.
There was a road, like the road would count, like the driveway, whatever.
Right. And then we were like, oh, well, then they have to have a sidewalk that goes to the main street, and I was like, I just don't think that's important.
Yes.
And all of us were kind of like, meh, but there were some people, I think there were other people who felt differently. So that's, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, then we remember the same.
Yeah, I recall that, and I was on Team Less Is More, and so I agree with the interpretation that it is not to apply to anything that is not facing, or yes.
Near the street.
What Commissioner Shelby said. It's late in the day. I'm having trouble with my words. However, I do recall we had a really extensive conversation about this being connected, empirically verifiably connected to community safety, the visibility, the line of sight to the street. And so I guess my question is what preserves that aspect for community safety and still removes any requirement that doesn't satisfy that particular aspect of the intention?
Sure. Yeah, so we'll work on that over the next month and see if we can see if we can limit the applicability of some of this stuff. That's where more of staff were at, although definitely it matters for your local safety, if you can see what's going on in your yard or not, for example.
Overall, I'm fine with you guys getting rid of that definition.
Yeah, great.
And I speak for everyone, apparently.
Until a head shakes horizontally. Okay, great. Like I said, that I think was the most hard to follow out of all of these. 1908. Whole new thing. Okay, speaking of 1908, we'll pop down to 1908010 on the bottom of the first page, and we revised the intent, applicability, and overview section of 1908. So recap, 1908 addresses the neighborhood residential, neighborhood residential, commercial zone, and then townhouses, houses, and duplexes in all zones. 1909 is the rest, other zones, as long as they're not like townhouses. So I just lined up the two, 1908, 1909, the purpose, applicability, and everything. They were written a little bit differently. We changed 1908 to fit the format of 1909 because they're kind of complementary chapters. No change to the purpose statements, no change to the applicability. We did add exceptions. So one of the things we ran into almost immediately is I want to convert my basement into a dwelling unit, but it faces like backwards, but it is next to the street. Where am I going to put that porch? This provides the same exemption that 1909 has for changes of use that are only minor exterior alterations or interior modifications. So if it's a remodel essentially, then you don't have to comply with any of this. That is the only substantive change. The rest is reorganization. Okay. The next one down, 1908030, clarifying that the public street is the right-of-way. Is the public street the curb? Is it where it is now? Is it where it is later? That kind of a thing. So we always intended in all of our graphics where that the lot line or the right-of-way line is where those applied. On the third page, 1908050, "Front porch and entrance," there was a conflict between a, maybe this came from the state guidance, I didn't look into this, whether a porch was a covered structure, and then lower down it said porches may or may not be covered. We defaulted to must be covered. If it's not covered, it is a stoop. So it's not like you can't build it uncovered. It's just a different thing. 1908060, "Garage requirements." I think this was just rewritten for clarification, and it also exempted buildings that are not within 35 feet of the right-of-way, so this reduces the applicability just a little bit. I think it's consistent with how we had been talking about it.
Hold on. We kept the five-foot setback?
We did.
That's a shame.
Yeah, that was existing language from old code.
I know, but I just really didn't think that it was good language, and I really wanted to see that go away. So I missed that we didn't get rid of it.
We can keep, we can keep working on these.
For 19.08.060, it's still titled "garage setbacks and lengths." Does that need to be changed to "setbacks and widths"?
Good catch, yes. And I think of it as a width, since it's, you're facing it, length is probably not wrong because length is also unit of measurement. Okay, drop down to the bottom of page three, 1909010, "Purpose and applicability." We combined chapters 1909 and 1912 as part of the update. 1909 applied to residential. 1912 applied to all or non-residential. Now that they're combined, the applicability for the combined chapter should be to all development. The ones I'm skipping over are ones that are just obvious or renumbering or something like that. 1909070, "Inclusionary zoning." That fit better as its own chapter next to the impact fee chapters. Oh, on the bottom of page four, 1909070, the inclusionary zoning section. There's no page numbers, I'm sorry. 1909070? And it's the bottom of a page. Okay, so we just moved this to its own chapter. Split the subsections into sections. That should facilitate any changes that we need to make over time. Makes it a little bit more visible and accessible, and then avoids any confusion over applicability. This business about 1908 and 1909 and townhouses and houses, and there's the applicability section in 1909 says, "Go see 1908 instead." If it's townhouses, that was never intended. That was intended to apply to the development standards, a term that sometimes means physical design things, not financial things, but could be confused otherwise. So for those three reasons, moving it unchanged to its own chapter. 1922030, "Where height reductions are required." We accidentally had Limu and LI twice, once paired with some other zones, and then their own rows below. We figure if they had their own rows, that those were the ones that were intended, not the one that was all combined. The next one down, 1922030, "Where height reductions are required." We used, if a development property abuts a property outside the city limits, we said that 28 feet is the height to assume. None of our neighbors have 28-foot zones. They're all 35 feet or more. So we made it 35 to match the predominant Snohomish County single-family height limit. Two more down, "Exception to off-street vehicle parking space requirements." Clarifying that one half mile is walking distance. The other ones are walking distance, and RCW state law specifies walking distance as well. Last two. 1934110, "Vehicle access to off-street parking." When we reduced the setbacks substantially as part of the update, there was intent for a couple fence and driveway-related provisions that had previously connected to the setback. It just said within the front setback fence transparency, for example, or within the front setback maximum driveway width. We wanted to relax the setbacks for buildings, but not necessarily for those other things. So we had replaced the word in the setback with what the setback had been, 10 feet or 20 feet. In this edit, we are, right-of-way abutting the front lot line is redundant because that is the same thing as just saying the front lot line. We didn't have the side street lot line in that. We just had the front, was an error noted by staff. So we are adding the 10 feet of the side street lot line, which is what the setbacks were. Now they are 5 feet. And then same thing, the very last one, "Fences Height and Location, 1940010." Exact same thing as the driveways one that I just mentioned. Those are the ones that I thought needed some explanation. I think everything else is either obvious or non-substantive, but if there are any questions, go back to any of those or anything else.
One quick question on that.
One quick question on nineteen point three four point one two oh, um. Except for compliance with the Americans with Disability Act, the if you're removing the RCW, you should probably have the full formal name of that, which is. Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety as amended, because there was an amendment in two thousand eight. So. It's technically an amended one if you're going to strike the RCW.
Perfect. The RCW, I'm not sure how that got in there, but that points to the Growth Management Act. Maybe the Growth Management Act refers to eighty eight, excuse me. Not sure. There was something else about this where. I think it used to say, sorry, there was something else about this where I think it used to say. Something more general. No, one twenty. Okay, no, that's a new, that's a new section. Okay, yeah, perfect. It will add the rest of the words around Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety as amended. Any others?
Commissioners, any additional notations? We're ready to move to the next agenda item, uh, the manufactured home community zone.
Thank you. I've got slides for this one. That just felt like the old days, didn't it? Going through line by line of calculations.
You had to give us something. We'll go through withdrawals up here. Gotta get something.
Okay, manufactured housing communities. So, the first. Yes. I started the memo with a note on terminology because it's quite confusing. And I didn't get the note right. Uh, it's actually housing communities, not home communities. So that we we actually have a couple of slides on um, terminology here. So I'll get to that in a in a brief moment. So just history. History on manufactured mobile homes goes back to the seventies, at least in state law and obviously even farther back from there. But in our recent history, uh, wanted to note that in two thousand and eight, we adopted a mobile home park overlay. That's not a typo. It used mobile home as all one word. Uh, it was a voluntary structure in which a uh, owner of a manufactured home community. Could opt into it, self-restrict from any redevelopment and then in theory and probably so would receive less property tax. Uh, because the value of it as an investment would have been reduced. Um, I, we did not get any takers on that and in twenty twenty and rethink zoning along with other overlays and and streamlining of code, it was removed.
Did anybody even talk to the city about it in that?
Not that we can find or in our conversations, you know. It was prompted by a similar situation to now concern. I think there was a park or closure. Maybe it was on the Evergreen Way Walmart site used to have one or two and um, so in response to that, we. We we stood up a protection ordinance, um, but it was voluntary. Uh, so it was unused twenty twenty, it went away. Uh, the state has been active. Some of the more notable ones, there have been a dozen at least bills on manufactured mobile homes going back the last twenty years, but most recently. Uh, in twenty twenty-three Senate Bill fifty-one ninety-eight updated notice and relocation provisions. And then two years later this year, uh, House Bill twelve seventeen limited rent increases to five percent for manufactured housing communities. So now the state structure, just as uh, I I think in simple terms, rent increases are limited. If a park is to close, you must give notice, you must give a waiting period. An opportunity for the residents or a nonprofit to purchase and then relocation assistance. Don't know all of the details of all of those. Frank knows a little bit uh, more. He's been doing a lot of the research, um, but it's a pretty um. Robust state system, but not enough to prevent ultimate closure and displacement. So that's why we are here. Uh, in Everett twenty forty-four, we had a lot of public comment and feedback about concerns about manufactured home communities. And then ultimately there were a couple of policies and inaction added to it. Uh, the urban form element talks about maintaining land capacity for housing types, including manufactured housing. The housing element um, has our affordable affordability uh, targets. Ensure equitable access so that all residents may choose their neighborhood. And then specific to this topic, protect manufactured mobile home communities from redevelopment into other uses. And an action implement a mobile home park zoning overlay. You see the terminology is already all over the place, so we're trying to consolidate around that. Uh, so here's our first action of Everett twenty forty-four. I think there are about twenty of them, so. Uh, that will be a big part of our work program going forward. Manufactured home factory built constructed after nineteen seventy-six and meeting federal HUD standards. Mobile home is it just the time? It's mobile before seventy-six and manufactured after. Park model home is a small version, single chassis. Tiny house with wheels, a small dwelling hundred to four hundred square feet. Recreational vehicle does not meet state building code requirements. And then the communities, the parks, manufactured, mobile, housing, home, community, park. You can arrange those words in any different order and they mean the same thing, which is a piece of land that is uh, rent with subdivided rented pads. Uh, for any one of those things that were on the previous slide. We will use manufactured housing community because that's what the state uses, although we could be convinced to circle around any other term. Unfortunately, this is the one with the most syllables as I lament around the office. There are ten manufactured housing communities in Everett. You see a map there, a list that's all in the memo as well as the zoning. Total of nine hundred and twenty-four homes in these parks, communities, excuse me. The zoning varies mostly U R four in the new zoning standard, a couple neighborhood residential, one neighborhood residential constrained. And one MU fifteen. Uh, we do not have a specific proposal yet. We wanted to start with kind of options and considerations and then hopefully by the next meeting, we can get towards a specific proposal for. You and the community to respond to. We've only started our public outreach component, so we're going to want to hear from. Uh, park owners, from residents, from others in the community and everything. So right now we're just kind of starting with some background and some options. Um, kind of obviously you could either protect all the communities, you could protect some of the communities or protect none of them. So that's one of our options. Presumably we've been decided on the action to take some action to protect. So that leads us to one of the first two there, all or some. We looked through a variety of uh, factors that could help us decide which parks. I think we talked about that in these chambers in Everett twenty forty-four. How do you decide which parks to preserve if it's not going to be all ten of them? We looked at redevelopment feasibility, which parks are more likely to redevelop, convert out of manufactured housing communities and into some other use in the near term. And there are a variety of indicators of that, uh, land to improvement ratio, how much the land is worth versus how much the improvements on it are worth. That's the most common indicator of redevelopment feasibility for. For other development types, houses or apartment buildings or commercial buildings or whatever it is. I didn't feel uh, like I fully understood how the assessor calculates improvement values for all of these parks. The improvements are typically owned by the person who lives there, not by the park. Um, I believe they pay taxes on the improvements themselves and the owner of the park only um. Pays the taxes on the land and whatever improvements are held in common. That's sounding right so far.
I guess when you're using the definition improvement, are you thinking of the actual home itself? Or I was thinking of again, lights, roads, other things that the park. Property owner would do and hence why we get that discrepancy between uh, some of the parks, um.
What did the assessor, what did the assessor say?
I'm gonna see, I didn't, I'll, I need, I'll need to double check that. Uh, we had some. Concerns again with some of these amounts were just so low uh, versus some of the others that were uh, much higher um, and this hence again what York's concern is again. The questioning this one metric, um. I mean, overall, again, we started with that one and then we started building out and looking at others because we didn't really find one that we can all say. This is what justifies what should be in or out. And again, hence uh, on this list that you see there, we we started putting in other metrics just to see. Ultimately, when we met just a few weeks ago, discussing all these different variables, again, we were struggling to really. Pick one and we wanted to have more of this discussion to see how your thought process and in considering all that we've done. Research wise, uh, looking into it, again, some of the metrics that York mentioned, did you want me to go on? Sure, um, we also looked at other uh, variables such as again, what's the redevelopment if. Post Everett forty uh, twenty forty-four, if these uh, uh, communities are next to um, commercial areas, would that be a likelihood? So there's zoning, there's. Uh, location, there's uh, also, uh, there was a lot of discussion with uh, again, House Bill twelve seventeen with their rent stabilization that. A lot of folks thought that once you capped the rent on there, it removed that economic interest from property owners and hence they would maybe want to then redevelop it. I looked at the notices that uh, occurred last year and this year. It's still such a short time because our rent stabilization passed in May, but. I didn't really see any divergence. It was similar amount of cases that were being or or properties that were being sold last year and this year. So. But again, I've heard that concern from many folks that I've talked with and that data doesn't really suggest otherwise. So. You know, again, I think I think there is a concern with folks, um, you know, right now, the the economy, the slowdown in the economy, a lot of folks aren't starting new projects. That could maybe be a reason why we aren't seeing redevelopment potential at this moment, but who's to say that's not occurring in the future? And so hence. This type of protection may be needed and considered. Uh, but yeah, we looked at just a variety of different factors, uh. And I wanted to present to you just all that we found and we can have a little bit more discussion on. If there's any one area that you.
So just to back up a second, why would we not be applying this to everybody? You said if we apply this to all of them, why would we not?
For example, uh, one outlier, uh, the Broadway, what's called.
The one that has a lot of value?
Uh, it, for the most part, I mean, we have been informed by the property owner that he want to cease operation as a manufactured home community in the future and they are not renewing leases. It's uh, surrounded by commercial. It looks like the most opportune. Piece of property for future redevelopment, including it in a protection does not seem to make sense, um.
Do we know what the residents think?
We have not engaged residents at this point and.
Do we, hold on, it says on here, so there are fifty-two parcels. Do we know how many people that is by any chance? About assuming there's about two per unit.
There was another list that showed the vacancies and.
It's not a fifty-five plus.
Broadway Terrace, that might actually, twenty-two unit?
Yeah, or it could be full of kids.
I mean, when you look at an overlay, there's a lot of just empty pads on that property.
Okay.
Are there any, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We're we're talking about the same one, correct? Broadway Terrace with twenty-two units?
Correct.
Okay. So.
Oh, so there's another chart that has the units, uh.
Is this chart incorrect?
That's the parcels. There's the the one that has the nine hundred and twenty-four shows the.
So this one has a different uh. I, is there a difference between parse the parcels versus the units? Could you, could you help us parse that?
Parcel, parcels of these land divisions, the actual lots, not necessarily pads.
Correct.
So pads versus lots. So let's say for Broadway, whatever it's. Twelve units, twelve parcels, that's, you know, fifteen acres divided by two. So, you know, approximately.
Oh, this one didn't have.
You know.
Yeah.
Okay, that make, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you for, yeah, thank you for that.
That does kind of change.
So I briefly did appraisal work and I happen to appraise mobile home parks.
Oh, yay.
And so I can tell you, there is a huge difference in the appraisal values and there's a lot of factors that go into it. Um, improve, like, are you driving in on a dirt road? Is it a paved road? Um, is it a older or a newer model? How many windows does it have? Does it have, you know, architectural details? So there's a lot of factors around how a mobile home or a manufactured home. Um, and those two things would be valued differently too. So, yeah, it it's not surprising to see such a huge variance. It probably speaks to the, for lack of a better term, quality. Of the housing units in each of those spaces. And age, yeah, absolutely, and condition.
And so much of that information is held by the property owner.
And they're not necessarily willing to share that. Because it's not pertinent, it it's not something they, you know, that's their business and so they're not willing to share that. We do have one park in the city that is currently on the market. And is in the process of negotiation and that's Silver Shores.
Silver Shores.
Right, okay, and that one is held by a trust. Is the owner put the build the park into a trust? The trust is looking to sell it because they want to start using the proceeds from the sale for the purpose of the trust. And they are planning on selling it to another owner of manufactured home parks. Not necessarily a Washington one, but they are aware of all the Washington regs. Cause I've had a lengthy conversation with their attorney. So that one is there and they want to be kept abreast as to whatever changes. So just on the subject of all or none or whatever, I just thought I, that one is worth noting at this point.
Are any of the park locations in a place where like, if you look at the. Train map or potential stations, would any of them be potentially rezoned in? Okay, that was.
Yeah, they're not too close.
Yeah.
Does not protecting some of these more meets, how would? The protection possibly conflict with our other goals? Whether it be for more dense housing, because if they take up acreage closer to other housing or even business, because we do have employment goals to meet.
We are setting up a push me, pull you. For anyone who remembers their Dr. Doolittle. I mean, it is definitely, we do want additional housing. But we also want affordable housing. And are we in the near term going to get more housing for these sites? At the risk of losing affordable housing and displacing people with. And there are not necessarily slots in other parks for them to go to if their unit can be moved. And so that's, it is a bit, I mean, we are butting heads with ourselves. So.
The the other thing is when you say request it, because you got the owners, the owners are the. Park ownership.
Well, we got two, two sets of owners.
And then the other ones are, all they own is the physical.
They own the dwelling.
Dwelling that's temp, that's essentially.
Some are temporarily, they supposedly they can be moved, okay? Be, that's the nature of it. But after a certain age, no, they cannot be moved safely. They are structurally not able to.
And I just also wanted to comment your previous question again on on our housing goals, uh. I mean, overall, you know, Everett twenty forty-four did expand capacity in many, many places and these manufactured home communities are relatively minute sizes. So if you wanted to protect them, it wouldn't really affect that goal of densifying, adding more housing. And I also wanted to mention earlier when you were talking about uh, sort of like, again. Getting price information was just extremely difficult. I did reach out to different parties throughout the state, uh, not uh, other associations, uh, manufacturer homeless, etc. Uh, as uh, Alice mentioned, I mean, generally these property owners treat that information very close to heart and I'm not willing to share. But at the same time, anecdotally, we hear from Harold and other news sources as well as folks who are engaged in this space, you know, I think. We assume that these manufactured home communities are affordable, but at the same time, because of housing crisis and escalation of housing supply. Uh, you know, I was informed that some of these parks have. I you know, I was informed that some of these parks have homes that are probably eighty percent, so it's not exactly. I was assuming just a lot less than that, so um again, when we go back to is the goal affordability. Hopefully, these uh manufactured home communities are still at a relatively compared to.
What do you mean? What was eight? What do you mean eighty percent?
Eighty percent that would of AMI, so it's actually it's market rate um.
To Commissioner Welch's point, uh the one that really jumped out at me was the the Broadway Terrace, the MU fifteen. I think we were pretty clear about our intentions in that space of the city and and so my my initial inclination is protect every everything and everyone, but we we made some tough decisions um because of the needs of the community in the future and I that one to me jumps out as as a space that we clearly uh made a decision and and so I would be inclined to um not include that on on a list of properties to protect. And and so I I started to try to look at how do we ensure that these properties are actually uh being used as a measure of protection for the most vulnerable people in our city, because that is, as Frank mentioned, that's the intention, right, to ensure that they're affordable. And so I went to the twenty twenty five pit data to see what the trends were and it was very clear that we're seeing increased uh how houselessness among two distinct populations, first and foremost seniors. Uh we're seeing, I I forget what they called it, they called it like the gray. So I I forget, there was a term that was being used because uh fifty five plus are being unhoused at a pretty significant clip compared to high other age ranges. And then the other one, interestingly, was young people, like under the age of twenty five, which that implies that maybe families uh would benefit from that protection, so is there a way to uh flag which parks serve those most vulnerable communities that tend to cater to families and tend to cater to our seniors? And and maybe think about protecting those?
We have a fifty five plus in one of the charts.
Yeah, some some of these are designated as senior communities.
Not necessarily families.
Right, so I you know, another observation would just maybe be the size of the units, uh larger ones, we could probably assume more families in there.
Not necessarily.
And not this time.
Also, some of these don't allow rentals. Some rules to some parks do actually don't even allow it to be a like you can't rent out the unit, it's you you uh everyone residing there must own the physical location, they can't give it to, they can't rent it out to other human beings. So so some of it, it's not always gonna be a rental thing, a lot of them are just flat out ownership of those and and that's who's gonna be living in there continuously.
And if these park owners, if the rents end up rising to the level where they're not serving the purpose of providing affordable housing, then I think that kind of for me, that changes the way I think about the land use um.
Pat 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 rents have uh skyrocketed recently.
That was, I think, one of the main things that the Silver Shores people were talking about is this sell is is a pretty big deal for them um. I don't, we don't really expect there to be more mobile home parks built in the near future, do we?
No.
No, so this is the, this is it. This is most likely a finite list.
Do we risk uh legal action for any of these, especially like the like say the trust that wants to sell theirs now or any of the private equity that have bought some recently? Especially if you look at down in Casino Road area. Cause anticipating light rail coming in some of these areas. Are we expecting legal action by them if we were to all of a sudden? Declare them protected?
The state regulations still apply. So the the whole exit I state regulations that you have to notify all the owners that you have to provide an option for purchase either by the owner, by the residents or a nonprofit, all of those state regulations still apply. So what we are saying either through an overlay or through a zone is that the use would not be an NR or a UR, if we go to a zone, it would not be one of the residential zones, it would be an MHC zone. If we go to an overlay, it'll still keep that neighborhood residential or UR residential and then put an overlay on top. There are options for sunsets, there are options for um looking at it again in twenty years. I mean, with the next redo of the comp plan or in ten years in the next redo of the comp plan, so there are options for looking at what next. There are also ways of saying that this is not economically feasible. And so what we were looking at and it's might be in future slides, because I haven't seen the slides, so we might be jumping ahead on conversation. But we are looking at what you would have to show to say flat out, we're not making any money, we you know, our our population is dying off or the gray wave is going away or something, but that this is, you know, still a piece of property that has value for another use. So.
Yeah, we have not done the full analysis as we're still developing options and every everything, we understand this to be a workable concept and that is a fairly well trodden path within the state of the general protections.
And has survived under the Washington State Supreme Court. Yeah, so we we have looked at Bothell, Kenmore, Renton, Bellingham. I can't remember all of them, but I know Kenmore went to the Washington State Supreme Court. For their Snohomish County, sorry. Heaven forbid, I forget our neighbors.
Yeah.
So we have looked at all of those things moving forward, so I mean, I think we feel comfortable on the playing field that we are not taking away their value because they still have value as to what they are. And for the most part, most of them are still fully occupied. It the ones that we think are the bigger ones for potentially protecting. And so.
Commissioners, what are your thoughts on overlay versus zoning change?
I had a couple of questions if you don't mind, um so under the protect all communities option, under cons, it says maybe difficult to defend legally in communities located in zones intended for higher density development, can you just talk a little bit more about what that would look like or what that means? Right.
Which page?
Uh eleven of twenty six. Bottom of the page. I was just curious what exactly it meant, maybe difficult to defend illegally.
Well, I mean, if your your density is based on the fact that you can go up to fifteen stories versus the fact that you have single story structures spread out. I mean, that is a huge and our table. Yeah, is that the highest and best use and is our table says what was the value to it? Frank, again, it was like.
I don't recall, I got.
A hundred and something to one or something, I mean, it was really skewed.
I'm also just wondering, I mean, again, when we talk about legally defensible, I mean, those Supreme Court cases were based prior to rent stabilization and in those cases, again, you could say it's not a taking, because if they had the ability to make those rents, but now with the rents capped, I wonder again, can that be challenged again?
It can be challenged again, whether they will prevail again is whether they will prevail is.
Yeah, we'll we'll provide some legal advice on this, is not the best place to be um guessing as to the uh uh I'm and I'm sorry that that made it into the memo, I'm not exactly sure what that means um.
Do we know if in Bellingham, anybody's exercised their option to to walk through it and?
They've sold one park to a community. A second park attempted it, but was not able to come up with the financing is my understanding.
But nobody but that but nobody's flipped it from like after Bellingham, but their overlay and there was as I understood it, an administrative process to say, hey, I really don't want to do this anymore.
I think that's in process, but I'm not entirely sure because they put in the right of first refusal and they were not able to pull it off, so whether they are exiting or whether a new owner came on board, I don't. I mean, I read an article and it was a while ago and I don't remember what the final outcome was. I am not a Bellingham expert by any stretch of the imagination.
I don't think I would be in favor personally of like a permanent thing, but like something that you could, you know, time limit uh at ten or or twenty ish years.
Or have some kind of a route out.
Have some kind of a route out, some kind of process that, you know, you could go through and be like, really, none of this is gonna work for this particular use case.
I mean, I.
In their view and then come explain it.
I mean, I definitely think the Broadway Terrace one is the exception, and so I but the all the other ones are in pretty similar. It's obviously there's only two different ones for the rest.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it. Holly is the other sort of exception in the fact that those are all RVs on site from what we can tell.
Initially, when we looked at the improvement land ratio, I think it was again, Bill um Broadway, Holly and Pine. Well, those were the ones that sort of probably stuck out, the other two were sort of questionable and then the rest, for the most part, uh we felt they should just be preserved.
And I couldn't find any information on the the Holly Park at all. It's sort of it there, but there it doesn't have a website, it doesn't. So I don't know what the story is there.
Okay, we do have um, there's a couple other slides, we've already touched on the questions, it's owner overlay and then reconsideration options is how do I get out of this once I'm in it? Whether it's at a city overall, um just to wrap up the the how to choose which parks to choose um. We did not feel the need to not protect all parks, we were just exploring all the different avenues and if we were to decide which ones, how would you decide? Likely to redevelop? Does that mean you want to protect it or you don't want to protect it? If it's not going to redevelop, maybe it doesn't matter if you protect it, but what if you were wrong? So that didn't seem like a great one, um tenant vulnerability, definitely uh Chair Chatters mentioned uh wanting to focus on the vulnerable residents. We kind of assumed that regardless of income level, which may not be the same as wealth level and other uh age and disability and other indicators um that just by the nature of your housing type and how tied you are to the park, that that is some level of vulnerability. So we didn't, as we went through, don't know all of the income and economic and demographic characteristics of all of the parks, but it it didn't seem like there was gonna be uh any part that was um totally non-vulnerable, I guess. Or the tenants would be. Then consistency with the comprehensive plan that gets at the redevelopment uh and how much capacity are we taking off the table and is that really conflict significantly? Uh we we actually pulled out, I think we had a version of this memo that had some recommendations and stuff and we decided to back up, but wouldn't you know Broadway Terrace kind of stuck out to us as well, so I'm glad to hear that we're sort of arriving at least at at this stage at a at a uh the same, the same.
What stage of this process do we have to do like um?
Notice?
Thank you.
Uh very soon, I think we want to get uh we Danielle is working on a public participation, we're gonna build on what we did with Everett twenty forty four um and webpage uh contact lists of interested parties. Want to make sure that all the owners of the parks have an opportunity to participate and then also make it available to the residents, we'll start that right after this meeting.
Oh, yes.
Yes. And we're meeting with that. Yeah, yep, we're meeting with the committee uh that he's on perks and built environment in a month. So that'll be another opportunity, but we'll talk to him directly too.
I do think when we're talking about how to decide.
Yeah, sorry, we're talking about how to decide. You know, what? How do we make what metrics are we gonna use to develop this? Um I do like thinking about uh obviously, the increase in zoning for Broadway really stands out, so I can almost put that one to the side. I don't think we should talk about, um I don't think we should consider incomes. I agree, I don't think that's especially for fifty five plus communities, they have a finite amount of money. Let's just not worry about that, um I do like the idea of making sure that we think about um how occupied these are. And it seems like most of them are pretty occupied, so that's a pretty big indication for me that that's important um. And also just looking at it from the view of the people that live there, I care a lot less about. I agree, this is just not that much land in hindsight to freak out about the potential lack of redevelopment of housing that we may or may not get. Um a lot of these are in neighborhoods, especially I'm thinking of Silver Shores. I mean, it's literally in a windy neighborhood, so it could be redeveloped, but it probably not like in a way that would just really get us to our threshold. Um so I don't think that's a hyper, I also just have a hard time thinking that these would ever not be a profitable thing for somebody to own, because if they were not a successful form of like business, okay, so right, because one of the things is this private equity groups nationwide are buying these up pretty quickly. So there is clearly a desire to own these, there's no way that these are not then financially viable, in my opinion, I mean, we could be wrong, but it seems pretty unlikely, otherwise there wouldn't be buyers out there, so um. Do you could just assume that there's even with a five percent ret rent cap? I'm like, I don't really care what they say, I just think this is such a vulnerable population and these type of neighborhoods have a lot of history and I think they're really cool and it's unfortunate that they are not as popular as they could be, because I think they provide a lot of options and opportunities for people um. So yeah, people centric, I'm not really worried about major redevelopment. They're probably giving making people are making a profit off of these somewhere. Those are the high level things, I guess, that I was thinking of and zone versus overlay, I don't know.
Yeah, that was a tough one for me.
Yeah, I don't know if I and I don't, yeah.
Are we done any last thoughts on which parks?
The the second park besides Broadway Terrace that I thought might be reasonable to consider uh setting aside is the Holly Drive Park um. And that one, that one's a UR four, so that one has, it does have potential to you know, give some nice housing units, that one right there on the edge of the city um the southwest edge of the city.
Any why would that be Chair Chatters?
Well, it has uh it it has seventeen units according to the grid. Um I it I know it's got one large parcel of land, that's a little over two acres, it has seventeen units, it it has the potential a two acre parcel of land uh that can be developed uh up to four floors, that's that is significantly more than seventeen units that could be offered to the community for housing. So that was why I kind of had my eye on that one, especially considering the improvement value to market value ratio on that.
Yeah, we'll look uh expect we'll learn more about each one of these um as this goes along, that was our, you know, we were trying to look, that's what this whole slide is about, what are different ways that we could um in a standardized way decide what met some threshold or not. And it did come down to kind of that, what we call conflict with the comprehensive plan.
I totally disagree. I think that that's one that we should absolutely protect, it's probably an even more vulnerable population, because those type of dwellings even though they might not fall into the traditional category are probably even more affordable. So I mean, that almost is I it's tough. But it's also not that tough for me, I mean, really, it's like, no, you should just protect pretty much all of them, but you should you know, traditional capital sick reasons, have an out for everything at some point.
I I was um I was, I was in terms of protection, I was thinking that the highest level of protection would be to rezone it. Um that would provide these residents with the most stability, the most reassurance that um a new crop of folks wouldn't come through and and yank this ability to live in these spaces out from under them um. Don't agree with you on that part, I still think we should consider removing that one from the list. Don't agree with you on that part. I still think we should consider removing that one from the list. But I think we should offer the maximum protection uh that we can to the parks we choose to protect. And maybe it, we could, with a zoning overlay, i- it's not a difficult process to just repeal that. Which could put a lot of people in jeopardy very rapidly. Yeah, yes, yes.
Well, I'll just sort of add, I guess we're under the assumption of. This needs to be preserved, but at the same time, if you also think about again, when we had the voluntary measure in place, no one did it. And none of them got redeveloped. So there's not like a huge. I'm sorry?
It was two thousand eight. I think this was a hot minute ago.
Yeah, but over those twelve years, none of them got redeveloped. So I'm just saying that with your argument that again, there's an economic interest to redevelopment. We didn't see it there. But again, we're assuming, uh, and again, it's sort of inconclusive, but we're under the assumption that because of. The rent being capped, there is a higher motivation to redevelop. And that's, I guess, that we're, we're trying to figure out whether that's true or not, and that sort of was inconclusive. But if we're going on that. I guess we're, we're sort of assuming that's going to be the case and hence why we're looking at. Do we know if the ones on Holly Drive, do they own?
I don't know.
Cause they're all RVs. I can't imagine either.
I mean, they must all be renters.
I just try, yeah.
There is what looks like one. What we, what I would probably consider normally like a manufactured home in the back, if you're looking at the street view.
But again, isn't that the issue? It's not the parcel, uh. The, the people who, who they, they own their actual improvement there, the home. But then it's renting from the property owner. So like, I'm hearing some confusion on that.
Well, it's just the Holly Drive one in particular is more of like an RV park.
Yeah, it's all RVs.
Versus the other ones where you have your own.
They look nicer than the ones I see on our streets in my neighborhood.
That's kind of one of those.
Be like. Model type. Uh, yeah, park model, which is kind of a cross between a.
There's like a big one of those out in Snohomish County. Like Con, Con.
Yes.
Conway Lake or something like that. Yeah, that's the kind of thing about something like that.
I suppose one of the things we could do, we could visit each side and take a picture from the street.
Oh, field trip, field trip. Yeah, but like, right, it has like that conceptual where you like live in your RV on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, those are actually private clubs.
There's a school bus stop.
You can't live there full time. Only there six months of the year.
Well, that's really specific. You learned a lot about it. That makes sense.
So I think we're always trying to balance the, the interest of the, the people who exist on the land currently. And the interest of future generations and how the land needs to evolve to support those future generations. And uh. Based on my own argument in my own head on that point. Yeah, the, the two that I mentioned, the Broadway and the Holly would be the ones that we should look at just because they're, those parks do not have. Although I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Sullivan, clearly, if you are in an RV park, I'm sorry, in a manufactured or a mobile home park, there. Is some vulnerability there, although not always, because actually there are some really nice parks. Um, there are some beautiful uh parks. In fact, where people have stunning uh manufactured or mobile homes in these parks. But those in particular, the, there's not a high volume of residents and the parcels are zoned for. The potential for significantly more housing than the number of occupants currently.
I mean, for full disclosure, I, I own an RV in an RV park, but it's in a different city. So, and I do rent it out. So some of them are pretty nice.
I just think about the people who live in Arizona who live in these types of neighborhoods and then also live here.
I spent a weekend in one.
I would say, is that on the, is that on the future plan list?
Okay, we've got uh zone or overlay and then reconsideration options, exit uh potential from this. Uh, zone or overlay, I think the big difference is whether it preserves the underlying zoning or not. Um, that's about it. So yes, if there's an overlay, it would be UR four with an manufactured housing community overlay. And if you were to repeal it, it would just revert to UR four. If it is a zone and not an overlay, I feel like everything is the exact same, except when you exit, you have to then pick. What zone does it revert to? That does make it a little bit more challenging. Maybe, maybe there's some perception there. Um, but I think substantively not a big deal. It would be a rezone process legally, one way or the other, a site specific rezone. Whether it's to remove an overlay or to rezone it from. From manufactured home community to something else. We were leaning towards zone because we didn't feel like there was a lot of um. Thought and care that went into the zoning underneath it. These parks have been here so long that the zoning has changed ten times and has never been used in those ten times. One note on the redevelopment risk is that we did just increase the development capacity pretty substantially on almost all of these. Uh, communities in one way or another. So it, that coupled with the rent stabilization could lead to some different incentives than had been in the past. Um, so that's, that's our thinking on, on zone and overlay is that you may as well. A- as you're exiting and choosing a new zone, just think about what is the right zone. And as part of that process at that time, rather than feeling kind of. Uh, anchored to something that nobody really, when we were looking through the zoning, we just, that's a, that's a community. We're not really expecting it to redevelop. Then reconsideration options, which uh is related. There's, so how can a park leave the bottom one standard site specific rezone process would be if we did nothing? That would be the way out. You zone into it and you rezone out of it. The criteria are on the right side, consistency with the comprehensive plan, relation to public health, safety or welfare. Limits impacts on neighbors. That's it. So those would, if you satisfy those criteria and the council agrees, then that would be the standard way out. We could also develop something a little bit more specific to this, um, such as demonstrating a lack of viable economic use. Some of the other cities that we looked at had that, and so a owner would come and say, look, for whatever reason, if it's maintenance or. Nobody's renting or whatever it is, and they would have to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the review authority, probably the council. And then in the middle is uh that you could exit at will maybe, but with more. Um, notice or opportunity to purchase or relocation assistance, things in the vein of what the state requires, but more of it.
Real quick, um, regardless of what we choose on those, do the sta- the state. Laws still apply no matter what. Okay, even if it's not. Yeah, okay, I'm just making sure. I thought that's what you said.
So a question about, I, I tend to love opportunities to demonstrate later that this is not working out as you intended. Like, for example, the demonstration of lack of viable economic use, but then I also wonder if that doesn't sometimes incentivize. Uh, behavior that undermines uh the intentions. So I, I don't know, Commissioners, thoughts on that?
Like, you'd want the threshold to be relatively high. Like, you can't just be like, oh, we're not making any money.
It would need to be carefully crafted in a way where it did not incentivize a, you know, a bad actor to. Not maintain. Yes, exactly. To engage in behaviors that would make it so it appeared to lack economic viability.
Allow the properties to allow the property itself to decay to the point where it's not economically feasible to keep it running any longer.
Demolition by neglect.
Lot of improvements in here. Uh, some of the parks have, I think one of them has a community center and maybe even a pool. Some of them, it's like a driveway, a grass pad.
Sewer line.
Some wires and pipes.
It could go beyond that. It could be a, it could be a, a management issue that is uh making it unpleasant. To the point where tenants feel harassed out of there, which then has an economic impact that they can show. Well, see, we're losing tenants. So I, I think there's a lot of ways that that could potentially be exploited. And so I would want to ensure we did not consider those things and close off those opportunities in however we. Designed a policy like that.
In some ways, maybe the state has already done that, oh, because of the limitation of five percent. I mean, again, that's not a lot from the property manager's. Perspective, you know, that are already saying, we're capped, fine, we're just going to do the minimal amount. So that, that sort of. It's already taken out of our hands. I, I think in some ways.
But it doesn't go to Commissioner Chatter's comment where the management structure is one that they just make life miserable, right? That they aren't getting the trash picked up regularly or that every time the kids are playing in the yard, then they start. Levying fees or fines or something.
A- as we, I guess, dive deeper, probably best to find out how each one is managed in the city. Do they have HOAs? You know, how, how are they each, how is, how is their governance either amongst the residents and their ownership? How's that? Each divvied out, which would probably help figure out even viability of them on, on how they all operate. Cause each one's going to do a little bit, probably a little bit different, I'm going to guess.
Also, I'd be hard. I guess I'm a little pessimistic this way, but like, I feel like most. I could see that no matter what the cap on increases is, you'd probably, as an owner, might look at just doing the bare minimum. Right? Like, I don't think I see a lot of above and beyond capital improvements often on. Whether it's like apartments or whatever. I mean, I feel like it's usually. Bare minimum. So if we're assuming like, oh, we're going to hold them back from being able to do all these lavish improvements, I highly doubt that we're holding them back. From that end of the scale. Um, I just meant to the way that you kind of said it like, oh, well, what if we're stifling their opportunity for capital improvements? I mean, they're going to do the bare minimum anyways, whether.
I would say that we were going to stifle. I'm saying, I'm saying, I think the state has already sort of set that in play because of the cap there.
Commissioners, final comments, questions on this topic?
I had a question for the zone versus overlay. Um, talked a little bit about sunsetting, kind of like the idea of exploring that a little bit more. I think that the data is showing us that there's a lot of demand for this right now. I think that as we move into the future, that's something that we could keep a pulse on because in theory, if this plan is doing what we want it to, there's going to be other. Types of housing that these people could move into and we might see that the demand falls for this. So in terms of zone versus overlay, is there one that's going to be easier for the idea of a sunset? Like I saw Bellingham had the thirty year overlay. Would that be the easier avenue there versus zoning at that point?
Thank you. Yes, a automatic repealer or sunset would probably need an overlay. Or somehow identifying what zone it would automatically refer to. I don't know if there's a mechanism to compel the council to take an action, but not. Say what that action is like. It's going to go away and the zoning will be nothing unless you, you know, something like that. Or in, yeah.
Well, I mean, most of our, I mean, most of them are already in a certain zone there, whether the four or in R or whatever. So when they just be.
If we did a repealer.
Repealed or whatever the current zoning they're sitting in is.
Yeah, so you would need it to be an overlay then to preserve that underlying.
Yeah.
A zone.
But even with the sunset for Bellingham, it's. I mean, so let's say they set the third, which they did, they set a thirty year because they couldn't decide, so they put that in. And yet they still have manufactured home parks. Are you going to then say, oh, sorry, we're not sunsetting? I mean. It's like. Are you going to then start taking action to protect again? I mean, it's just, it's sort of an odd way of doing it that it says on January first, twenty fifty-one, we go away. And it's like, really? You know, even if you're a. Community owned park. Are you then going to create a problem for the community? I mean, it, it just seemed an odd thing to me when I. And they said that it was because they couldn't decide, so they decided on a sunset. And I was like, yes. So what you're basically doing is kicking a decision down the road without making a decision and. In twenty fifty-one or twenty fifty, you're giving your council a headache that.
I think I was looking at it more as an opportunity to reassess because in thirty years, there might not be the demand for these things and we might not feel like.
And I think that's a different thing than sunsetting it. I mean, a reassessment in twenty years for demand is very different than saying in twenty, on January first, twenty twenty, twenty fifty-one. Which is what Bellingham's does. I mean, literally, it gives a date. So.
Pretty tough to put a note on the calendar and say in twenty fifty-one, let's remember revisit this. It seems like either it's an automatic repealer that forces you to either extend it or it goes away. Or you just wait until somebody says, okay, it's time, let's do something.
But doesn't the comp plan kind of give you that?
Exactly.
Or if, if change, if things have changed dramatically for that property or for that industry. We have the mechanism for the property owner to come back to us with those criteria that, yeah, my demand is not there anymore. It's just not working. I'm, also I have a eighty, sixty percent vacancy rate and I can't seem to close that rate any longer. So my economic, economic viability is gone.
Right.
So either the comp plan or that, those other mechanisms would be a, probably a natural. Way of sunsetting, if you want to use those terms, you know, not quite sure where thirty came from either, but.
I, I don't know.
Twenty-seven and a half and we're good, right?
It was nine forty-five in the evening. A decision needed to be made. They wanted to go home.
Is there, is there anybody that's chosen a, like an enhanced compliance path at all and be like, hey, like. If you want to get out of this, you know, trouble, whatever the state is, you can get out of it today and, and ramp that down over time.
Haven't seen anything like that.
At the moment.
Seems like something Seattle would do.
Seattle only has two parks now. And they're adjacent to each other.
I would just guess that that sounds like something that Seattle would have is the preservation as well as some more relocation kind of things. They just have. Whether it's specific to manufactured home communities or more general, it wouldn't surprise me.
I mean, I, I wouldn't see a downside to doing both, right? Like protect, but also give the option and like, hey, if you want to make the option hurt, then make the option hurt. That's fine. If, you know, the, if it pencils out that giving the people four times or, you know, whatever the state's going to give them now. The investor seems better, the owner seems to think that's a better path. That would hopefully also be enough where those people could get into a more permanent housing with that. I kind of lump sum to do so, right? Like that's. I don't know. I don't know what those numbers look like.
I do, leaving and out, I think is important, but having the burden be pretty high to.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, look, the relocation fee that they get does not cover the cost of relocation.
How, how different is it?
It's about ten thousand dollars different, if not more.
So that if the relocation, I think was, you listed it's, I want to say seventeen ish.
And it's about twenty-five ish to re- that, that was several years ago.
That's an RCW, relocation assistance.
Yeah.
So you just said they travel, RCW is a terrible. Right, like.
Cause I mean, the research that I did was a, a park in, in Seattle. Not like just off of Lake City Way and one of the owners who worked for, one of the property owners, homeowners. Worked for Sound Transit. So they were not eligible for the relocation fee because they earned too much money. And I think he, he said in the article that it was going to cost him about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars to relocate. And this was several years ago because those condos have been there for four or five years now. But the value of the land just so far exceeded what. The, what they were getting in rent and everything else. And they wanted out of the business.
I would entirely not bind it to income, right? Like if you're there and this impacts you, like this impacts the park, right? Like that, all the residents. I don't care what you're making or what you're worth. You just, everybody gets the same. If we opt to look at this route.
Okay, what I'm hearing, and I think we're going to try to move this to a specific proposal by the next meeting. I don't think we're going to get all the way to a public hearing and recommendation. Maybe we get to the public hearing. Um, I'd be surprised if we can get to a fully formed satisfactory product, but we will try. Um, but what I'm hearing is interest in protecting most of the parks. Um, sounds like Broadway Terrace. Um, but what I'm hearing is interest in protecting most of the parks. Um, sounds like Broadway Terrace is the clear outlier. Uh, do a little bit more research into the Holly Drive one and what is the structure? We were wondering a lot of the same things. That, uh zone unless somebody wants a repealer and then it would have to shift to overlay, but so far probably zone. And that there was interest in kind of all three of those for the reconsideration options. The rezone is no matter what. Lack of viable economic use seemed like a good one. And then looking at opportunities for more uh tenant protections or relocation or something. That about was the main.
At the end of the day, we can't stop a park from being sold to somebody else.
It's not necessarily real bad if it is sold.
Right, but we just, we can't stop the sell. We're just trying to say, protect this, keep this up. Yeah, keep it running.
I know the state floated, the legislature floated a bill. I don't think it made it through where I think the only thing they tried to limit was if you had, if you owned five or something like that in the state, you couldn't buy any more. Like by a single owner or a single entity. I I don't, I think it made it through committee, but didn't make it to the floor. It's either five or seven, like to keep the there, I think they were trying to keep the private equity from somebody buying like bunches of them. But uh, I I did not make it to a floor vote, but there was some level there.
If if, when we have the public meeting on this, I would really like us to see like direct mailers to everybody at every single one of these parks. Like if we can go and we can have community outreach. Like, I think it's super important these people have the opportunity to be as engaged as they'd like to be. And sometimes we fail a little bit as a community.
Hopefully the council members, yeah, especially, you know, are really involved with this. They're, they're the ones that are really boots on the ground there.
And I think we need to, I mean, as we get, develop this, I think when we do our outreach meeting, they can't necessarily be at the parks because people will feel that they can't say what they want to say. I mean, the parks people are gonna probably show up and be there. And so there may be some um hesitancy or res, reticence in speaking. And so.
I will hold a neighborhood meeting specifically on this topic. For Silver Lake neighborhood.
Thank you.
Uh, especially because a lot of these parks are near us. And I've already had, I think, two of them come from two different ones, but specifically from Silver, Silver Shores. They've come to most of our meetings for the last, for this, about the, when this first came up. They're pretty, they're pretty anxious. They, they're pretty nervous about.
Well, it's interesting because one of their tenants contacted the lawyer for the trust and that's how he called me. So I, I mean, I had a lengthy conversation and then he is in California where the trust is established, but they are using a Seattle law firm for the local real estate aspect of it.
Yeah, is the only thing that separates those two parks? The freeway?
Yes.
Then there's the other two parks that are about each other too, right? Fairway and Loganberry.
I believe so.
They look like they are about each other.
Or fairly close.
They're all on the city limit.
Yes.
Fun fact on Silver Shores, which I find very important. Sometimes turtles from Silver Lake cross the street into Silver Shores. Sometimes they have to put up little turtle crossing signs. So when you're driving by, careful. This time of year, there's a lot of.
Taxes when they come in there?
I mean, they're using the road, so they better be registered. Um, yeah.
Do they have license plates?
They better.
You put a little sticker on.
Out of the fast lane.
That would be so cute. Oh, my God.
Get them one of those little skateboard things that they put turtles on and let them, okay, I'm gonna stop. Any additional?
Yeah, they do. You know, they do the wildlife overpasses. We could do one just for turtles.
Yes, I worked on one of those.
I love those.
Okay, I think we're.
Turtle videos when I get home. Additional uh questions or comments uh on this topic?
I would say I'm more interested in the overlay of the, if that's the way to keep the original zoning or the zoning that everything's around it, what seems more, the best way I think to go at this point.
I wouldn't want to lose zoning capacity. And I guess I I was, my calculus was if it's reevaluated in the future, then it's more likely that we would potentially maybe even increase zoning capacity on those parcels.
Well, the idea is though is they're already sitting in a certain zone.
Yeah.
Already. So I figured that whatever's around it would already get probably upzoned if.
Yes.
They get upzoned.
Yeah. Additional uh comments, Commissioner Shelby, Commissioner Rutledge, you want to weigh in on that uh zone versus overlay? Yeah, it's a tough choice. Yeah. So we'll leave it to you all to decide what to propose.
We'll be back. So we're gonna check in with the Council Parks and Built Environment Committee uh just before your next meeting. So be able to get some input from them. Thank you for the discussion.
We now have, I'm sorry?
S- uh, September, oh, five to six PM, five to six PM, just before the full council on. It is the week before the Wednesday before.
We have a final opportunity for public comment. Do we have anyone online?
No comments. Thank you.
Oh, goodness. Okay, then we have the same interloper online. Uh, then we have completed our.